Call the meeting to order to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Sandy.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mazzoni?
Here.
Councilmember Parham?
Present.
Councilmember Tapolero?
Here.
Mayor Palafini?
And I am here. Is our camera ready to go?
Well, it is.
Yeah, okay, good go, okay. Now's the time for non-agenda public comment. If you want to bring something forward to the attention of the council and it's in our purview, we will listen to it now. We can take no action, but the only action we can take is possibly putting on next agenda. Any public comment?
Good evening. Kim Green, representing Weed Recreation and Park District. I just want to give some information about two things that are coming up for us. This Saturday, we are doing a free swim day at Bell Air Pool. It's our grad reopening since we got our Prop 68 money and we've had both of the pools refurbished. The Rotary has graciously agreed to do hot dogs, so that's at noon. And then the ribbon cutting will be at about 12:30-ish and then the pool will be open from then until whenever the lifeguards decide to close. And then the other is, we are starting this year an outdoor aqua fitness class that will be at the Bell Air Pool. And it'll be, it's going to run June 19th through August 17th. Twenty dollars a week from four to 450 and they can contact us at the community center to get registered.
Did you say that was gonna happen all summer?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yep.
And how about admission, is the open house swim day free?
Yes.
I like that, okay, thanks.
Have you seen the pool since it got redone?
No.
Yeah. Oh. Oh, man.
The baby pool will not be ready for Saturday.
Dang it.
I know.
I don't have to get my rubber floaties. Okay. Any other public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Richard Dingus. I represent the Weed Chamber of Commerce. And I just want to thank everyone that turned out for the steampunk event this, in May. It was a pretty good event, not as good as I would like it to be, but we did make a profit. Not a big one, but it was our second event and I want to thank everybody that did show up. We had, it was, it was fun, but it was very, very hot. So, not many people dressed up, but I think we're gonna have a better, a better outcome next year. So, I just want to thank everybody, thank the city, thank Weed PD for being there for us. And we didn't have very many incidents, if any at all. So, I think it went off very smoothly, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Richard. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to council member announcement, meetings, reports, and comments. Want to start off with council member Mark Mazzoni?
Nothing at this time, I'd like to maybe wait till later if I could, but nothing, nothing right this point.
We'll come back to you.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember Parham?
Well, I just wanted to echo what, what Richard from the chamber said about the steampunk festival and thank Weed PD for, and the public works for their work on making that, that happen well. And let everybody know about the Carnival coming up next month. And that's it.
When is the Carnival, what's the dates, is that the eighth?
The fifth through the ninth.
Fifth through the ninth, okay.
Six, seven, eight, nine.
Six, seven, eight, nine?
I think it's set up date, my bad.
Okay. Councilmember Hall?
I don't have anything to report.
Councilperson Tapolero?
I'm on what Darrell said, Carnival is July Thursday, the sixth. And that will be the junior bocce tournament. If you know any kids that want to play bocce, that's, get them signed up at the chamber office. And then the adult bocce will start Friday night. And then I'm on the transportation committee, but of course, since this is the second Thursday and it's only the eighth, I don't meet with them till next week, so I don't have anything from that. That's it for me.
Well, I'll just jump on Richard's steampunk event. At the time, there was a resource meeting for the mill survivors, so there was a little bit of activity at the high school. And my understanding is that the Rotary had a golf tournament. And so, lots to do anyway. That's all I have to report. Let's council move on to the consent agenda, item number five. Any requests to take any items off the consent agenda?
No, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, we're moving on. Oh, any public comment to the consent agenda that they want? Always gotta remind me, we're running the show. Okay, no public comment, moving on, thank you. Yes. We want to move item A on the council business. Eight A, or excuse me, eight D to eight A. Is that correct? Okay. So that we can give all council members a shot at making comments on, on the TOT tax. Onto item number seven, which is presentations, we have Melissa Wetstein out there in the audience. She's the Chair of the Measure O Committee, which is known as the Quarter Percent Sales Tax in the City of Weed.
Thank you, Mayor and council member, for having us here. And I want to start by saying thank you to past and present council members for the Resolution 33 to 2022, which allowed us to meet as an advisory committee and really represent the thoughts and the passion behind the citizens of the community of Weed and really where their direction is going with this Quarter Penny Sales Tax that was passed. I would like to assure the council and say that we're very pleased that all the committee members agree that we were a very diverse cross-section of the community, that each had their own interests for each of the members that presented and obviously for each of the council members who appointed them to this committee. We were pleased to get to know each other, we were pleased to learn that we all had very divergent views and that we all had passions that were close to our heart and that we could all share with each other. As far as being Chair, it was a pleasure to serve with them and for them, and I thank them for that. The interesting part that I would like to share with the council is that, notwithstanding the diversity of the individuals that you all selected as part of this committee, it was amazing that when we started to come together after these presentations, there was a universal, common desire for the outlook of how this Measure O money would be recommended, that the board members would take our recommendation. And it, and really, each of us with our own passions still came together and it was amazing to see how similar-minded we were after hearing all of the presentations from the individuals requesting Measure O funds. And it clearly is an indicator that the broad views of each of you as members of the board, which I'm sure we carefully selected the person who was on the committee. Hopefully, this diversity represents that, that each of the board member representatives had an equal voice in making these recommendations and respected in each of their opinions. And so, I hope it leaves each council member with the takeaway to the fact that the priority of each of these individual members and the priority of the council member who placed us on the committee, not only personally was respected, but the priority of that individual was respected in these recommendations. On to the recommendations, I'm gonna presume that all of you got the 14-page packet that the committee was able to forward to you all. I'm sure it was probably a shock, but we had so many thoughts that when we started compiling it, it just kept going on and on and on. For those of you who don't like to read, I personally liked the pie charts that got thrown in there, little bit of color. But the number one takeaway of the budget that I want to give as far as our recommendations is that all of those requesting the funds to operate and to maintain the services for the seniors in this community were honored and they were part of the recommendation. And I know some of you may be thinking that there were some budgets that weren't granted in whole. However, I can tell you the committee looked very carefully to make sure that the services that they were providing were not going to change. And the number two takeaway that I would give the council members is that we were happy that after making sure that we were maintaining services and accounting for inflation, that we were able to end up allocating more than requested to the senior lunch program. It was not divided the way that it was requested, but overall, the, the council should know that we allocated $1,828 more requested to that senior lunch program. And ultimately, it was because the committee felt the quality and the quantity of the meals that we were able to provide under the senior lunch program, we wanted to make sure that they were maintained, especially in this time of inflation. And number three, the only department that did not receive their full request, which is not, and I want to reiterate, this is not operating costs, was the request from the Parks and Recs Division of the county. And for the council's quick review, the money not allocated had to do with the $30,000 that was in their original request for Measure O funds. The committee took a close look at this particular $30,000 and first determined that not granting this money was not going to change the services to the seniors. And it was not going to increase any program costs to the seniors. The $30,000 is a request for reimbursement for memberships that the Board of Parks and Rec has decided to give seniors, which is a $10 a month reduction. And that $30,000 would cover about 125 seniors. I want to assure the council member that the Parks and Rec still collects between $90,000 over the two-year fiscal budget that we're talking about for those 125 seniors. That's through the programs that are provided from the government, such as Silver Sneakers or other insurance programs who provides a $30 stipend for health and fitness of seniors. So, overall, Parks and Rec is still collecting $90,000 for the two-year fiscal period that Measure O was looking at. That's approximately $45,000 per fiscal year for those seniors. And not granting this $30,000 out of our Measure O funds will not change the services that are provided to those seniors. And obviously, we encourage them to get out and exercise and enjoy not only the physical fitness, but the social interaction that's provided by that. We also, the committee carefully looked at this request for the $30,000 and there were some questions as far as who this is being provided to. There was some curiosities to the fact that the $10 is being provided to anyone 60 years or older. And even the Medicare, Medi-Cal programs, as well as the other insurance programs, provide that Silver Sneakers at age 65. So, we don't know if this was an outdated number, if it was selected for a particular reason, but it wasn't represented to us when we were asked the question. So, there was a certain amount of question of how far it met the requirements of the Measure O as it was passed by the voters. I'm sure that the committee is looking at the major difference is in the police department from their request and to what Measure O committee is recommending to this council. First of all, I'm sure the question is why? Well, let me give you the simple answer to that. Universally, every single committee member that you all put onto this recommendation board universally believes this is what the citizens of Weed want. So, that is why the additional money is given over to the police department. I can tell you that it was the easiest to decide and it was done quickly and it was universally done. And matter of fact, we did what we could because we don't even think we gave the police department what we think the citizens of Weed want us to give. We simply just ran out of money. The last thing that I want to give as a takeaway, which is not contained in the packet that's given to you, is that the committee overall was worried about some of the contract languages, language. That's not for fire or police, because obviously those are run internally, but those in which there are contracts. One of the, one of the provisions that, that we discussed as far as the committee with Resolution 33 2022 was that we have an oversight responsibility to the citizens of our community, that this money is actually going for the purposes of what they voted to enact this for. And what we found in looking at the contracts is that the language was so wishy-washy as to us just giving a chunk of money and not giving a budget or being specific about what we were saying that it was for. And ultimately, it left us in a place when we were thinking about a year from now, when we're reviewing the fiscal reviews, and there is no way that we could ever say that the money wasn't allocated the way that the committee or that this council wanted allocated, because simply there's no language in there defining it. It's handing over a lot of money, a lot of money from the people of this community and we just simply don't see a way that we could effectuate that. We know as a committee that we're, we are not lawyers, in-house lawyers, but we do know that the city has a city attorney and we would request that this board carefully look at some of the recommendations we placed in there. It's not to deter these wonderful organizations from what they're doing and we're assured and we believe that they're using the money in the best way possible. Matter of fact, I think a lot of these places take what could be a pie, split 12 ways, and they figure out how to split it 120 ways. But I do think that we have a responsibility to this community to make sure that it's, it's used for the reasons that Measure O designated that money. With that, I'll answer any questions on behalf of the committee.
Questions, start with Robert, you want to start, us all?
Thank you for the in-depth report, for sure. There's a lot, lot in there. I, I don't have anything other than, than the, I was concerned about the, the spirit of the, the Measure O. And, and as we, when we, when we agreed to have a committee, oversight committee with it, you know, I was all for that and, and what I was thinking, you know, Pollyanna that I am, I was thinking that we would, it would be a, we, we have the library and the seniors. That was basically, you know, the, the specific things that we were covering with Measure O. And then we'd have a contingency fund left over for other, other needs in, have some, you know. But the committee itself, I was hoping that the committee would say, okay, we have, this money's ours. What, what do, what do the people I'm talking to, what do we, do we want? And going into, you know, we have some contracts that we're in now that, that kind of, you know, kind of, things are, things are different than, than what I anticipated, but I, I'm, what you've, what the work that you've done, it's obvious that we, there's nothing here that's not needed, for sure. And, but I, I really, I'm hoping in the future that we can kind of get back to, you know, we, when you have a, an election like that, what we, what we were doing actually was, we needed 50 and 1. And that's what, what happens with when we, when we have the wishy-washy thing you're talking about. You know, if we went to specific, just for the library, which was originally what we were thinking about doing, we would have taken 66% of, of the vote for that to pass. And so, it, it is clumsy and there is some wishy-washy stuff and I think that you're really on it, you know, that, that I'm, I'm hopeful that you're, you're going to, and I'm really respecting the fact that you are aware of the wishy-washy thing and, and, and going forward, using that as the community decide, decides how to do it. What, what do we want? We were really talking about, when we originally did it, we were really talking about, you know, let's do something for our community. Before this, there was, there was nothing, there was a golden seniors. That's all there was in, in the community for, for senior citizens, zero. You know, it didn't, didn't exist. But I, so I might, I'm really not saying anything other than as we move forward, I think we're going to learn a lot about what the community wants to do with this. But what you've presented here is what you had to work with and, and, and thank you for your, your work.
I appreciate that. And I would point out that 60% of, of this total budget is going towards the seniors of the community. I know it's divided up by specific subdivisions, but still 60% is allocated to that particular need. And unfortunately, because of the fact that this is a new measure, there are some things in the community with police and fire, as well as public works, that need to be brought up to par so that we can then turn and look at increasing some of these other values. And I would say, as far as the committee is concerned, there was a lot of discussion of, we really would invite these groups to come with a comprehensive budget and talk to us about where they could use some extra pennies here and there. We were, we received very slimline budgets and it was very difficult for us to, to make decisions.
Councilman Tapolero? Councilperson Tapolero?
Oh, that's fine, I don't care. So, I was, I was, when that, when this vote passed, I was not on the council. I was, the same time it passed, I was also elected. And I was under the impression when I was sitting out there, that it was for libraries, seniors, and emergency services. Did you guys get the information of what the county gives our library? I'm going, I'm assuming you did.
We actually went quite in-depth with the library because we were actually asked only for funds to do fixtures inside of the building. And the committee kind of through their own interrogation process, was able to figure out where the funds were coming from. We were quite aware that the county is supplying the books, the computers, the wifi, and that essentially the city of Weed is a very interesting kind of character when it comes to the library and that the entire fund for the library is coming from the city itself, in which is a little bit different than other city setups. And so, we were cognizant of that when we were making the decision about the library. And what I can say about our library is that the individuals who we have working there, we heard extensively about the type of work they were doing to fundraise outside of the funds that were given by the city. And part of our reasoning that we wanted to give some additional money for salary is because, with all things, if the morale is high amongst employees, they love doing their job and then...
So, they, they don't get any from the county, Tim?
The county only provides the books, the internet, and the computers, that's it. They don't provide any money to, for the other operations, no. And they don't provide any of the money for the utilities. We pay for all the utilities through this fund and we pay for the part-time salaries for the librarians. And I know there was some discussion, somebody had mentioned, well, Wyrika only pays $15,000 for their library. And I called Emily, our former finance director, and she said, that's essentially what the city of Wyrika donates to the county library in Wyrika. They don't have two separate libraries, they don't have a city library.
Yeah, they have the main library.
They have the main library. And then Mount Shasta has, I believe, is it a quarter or a half penny, or maybe a full Quarter Penny, that goes strictly designated for that. And they actually, in Wyrika, or in Mount Shasta, they hire a, it's on contract. They have a, a person that has a contract with the city to run the library. They have a board of trustees, I talked to the city manager quite extensively, for that Quarter Penny, similar to what we have for the oversight. And then the board of trustee allocates and decides who, you know, the, the contracts for that and any improvements that they're going to be utilizing for the library itself, so.
So, did I hear, did, I, I was told, I don't remember by who, that the county has $900,000 a year towards the libraries?
I, I don't know what their budget is, but all I know is what they budget for this community is just for the book circulations and the wifi and the computers, that's it.
I was told $750. That came from somebody in the county.
Well, I mean, we can, but that's for the entire county. And they also allocate for Dunsmere and some of these other smaller communities too.
Right, hopefully, they're not giving Mount Shasta any of that, because they've got their own thing going on. And, and then the main, I mean, is most of it going to the main library?
I'm, I'm assuming so, yes.
That's, could, could somewhere along the line, you don't have to do it tomorrow, we figure out that, what the county does with theirs, or we, do you want me to call the county?
I, I can, I mean, you mean as far as their overall county, the budget for the county library?
Yeah, what is their, what is the county doing with their library money?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I'm not involved in that, so I can, I can find out.
I can ask too.
Yeah.
Okay. No, go ahead.
Isn't all these libraries all connected together?
Yeah, I mean, they...
So, it would be on the umbrella of the county?
Okay, the county, I think at one point, way prior to me getting here, they ran the libraries throughout the county.
Right.
And then they decided to pull back and just allocate certain services for, for the different ones. And there is value to what they do with providing the books and the circulation and, and the inner library exchange program that they have and the wifi and the computers that they provide. There is some value to that, so I'm sure that's what's part of that $750 comes toward. But the actual operations of it, we do here, the, the city provides the funds for that.
Any other questions from you guys? Darrell?
I'm not done.
Oh, you're not done? Well, you gave it to Mark.
Did he interrupt?
I asked a question. I didn't interrupt.
He didn't, he didn't interrupt you.
I asked a question.
And then? Did you? Did you guys know with the Parks and Rec that the Parks and Rec doesn't have any right to ask our city attorney for any information? If the Parks and, I sit on the Parks and Rec board, I mean, there's not anybody in this room that doesn't know that. And when Parks and Rec has legal questions, they have to go to county council in Wyrika. So, and I, you just mentioned that, that how poorly that was written and we can't. Now, maybe tonight, because it's on our agenda, we can ask our city attorney if he likes it. But we, but the Parks and Rec doesn't have any...
But does the county council review it, though?
Sure.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, but I, I assumed that the city and their half of the contract is represented by the city attorney and I would assume that Parks and Rec would have some type of review, whether it be through a board or whatever. So, the, the recommendation for the city attorney was really to protect the city to make sure that we're spending Measure O for Measure O.
Okay, I'm good with that. So, but you guys did know that, that the city and Parks and Rec are two completely different entities?
Correct, and that's why we knew that there were contracts and while I said that, obviously, police and fire, there was no comments because there's no contract.
Yeah, they're fine. Okay, that, that was my, that was my question.
Okay, now you're on. We gotta hurry, Darrell has to...
It's gonna be quick. I, I just wanted to say thank you to all the committee members that I see sitting out in the audience and thank you, Melissa, for setting up this chair. And you know what, I'm completely happy and pleased with what I read and how it was explained because I, and that's what I, I mentioned, that they were given information, that they had to go by what information was given to them. And they guys did an outstanding job with it and, and I hope to be working with you guys again because this is what the city needs to get some activity going with the, with the citizens of this town to do exactly what, what you guys were tasked to do. And as far as I'm concerned, you did an outstanding job on it. And with each year, we'll, we'll continue to learn, all of us and the, the Measure O committee. So, again, that's all I have to say, thank you very much, you did an outstanding job on it and I'm proud to be part of it.
Councilman Parham? Councilman Parham.
Well, ma'am chair, I'd like to thank you and the rest of the committee for the outstanding job. I feel that you've gone above and beyond what we expected in a positive way. The point of the Measure O committee was to make sure that the citizens had a voice outside of this council, that was fair and independent, to look at what the people of this community were looking for with that, as we're all subject to those taxes. And the purpose of a budget is a financial tool to provide a roadmap, so that we have an idea of where we're going, and, you know, can amend as we go along. I understand the spirit of the, and this was before my time on the council, the planning commission, but I understand the spirit of this was for senior services, library, et cetera. But what I'd like to remind the community is that, you know, police, fire, and public works support the senior citizens of this community. And to make sure that we have not only a proper budget and guideline and roadmap, so to speak, that supports all of these different entities, but also going above and beyond to look at the language of the contracts, to protect the city and the citizens who support that funding, was really par for the course, and I appreciate the work that you all did. You're all volunteers, and, you know, great job.
I get to go last, don't you? Move now. I would like to say, I'm in agreement totally with the job you guys did. I think it was outstanding. I have not delved deep enough into your recommendations. Truthfully, it was not a great week for me, but I will tell you that there is a wishy-washy, as Bob would say, or you would say, in that. It was written that way, it was written by a lawyer, okay? It was reviewed by another lawyer. I think part of the intent of it was maybe a little bit wishy-washy. I know that the library started out, we, as the county folded on all the libraries in our cities, we picked up the ball with, along with the volunteer organization, with the Friends of the Library, and we participated in bringing them back to health. Our original contribution was seventeen thousand dollars. And of course, it's been ten years of Bob, I think it's pretty close to the timeframe, wasn't it? That climbed to thirty-four, that climbed, and it seemed like we were losing our friends at the Friends of the Library a little bit. Plus, as people age, it gets harder and harder to fundraise. Seniors, we did a survey, we requested what they wanted. What seniors at that time wanted was socialization and transportation. Transportation came with the bus, socialization came with having a meal together, along with a couple of other activities that go along with that. So that's just the history of it. And I think your review was good, and I think including public safety is good, and what we can do with those funds is great. I just think we need to review what you've recommended, and the council needs a little bit to take those recommendations seriously and see how we want to move the ball forward. But I do appreciate everything you did. I'd make one comment that hopefully we get some more volunteers at the library. So anybody out there in the audience or on TV, volunteers are always needed, almost for every organization, and it makes your community work. And thank you, I appreciate your time. Okay, thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
Okay, as stated before, we're going to move item D up to item A at the council meeting. It's the TOT tax, and we're doing that so that all council members can participate. Sandy, if you could draw up that, okay?
Okay, this is, every year, what we do is we allocate TOT money to various organizations. TOT is transient occupancy tax. It's a tax on the motels in our neighborhood to provide extra money to the cities, actually to our city and the general fund. Out of that, we collect, we are allowed to spend twenty percent, seventy-nine thousand dollars this year. The council entertains all requests for those funds. Stipulations are, it's for community enhancement, somebody refresh me now, community enhancement, beautification.
City promotion.
Did everybody get that one? Do we need them speaking up louder? Okay.
City promotion, community events, economic enhancement, and community beautification.
Thank you. All right, so where shall we start?
You've got the averages. There's everyone's breakdown, all council members' breakdowns. You have your amount requested, you have your organizations that are requesting the funds, their reasons why. You guys have all read their narratives, so you should know what their plans are for the funds. And the averages are over here on the right.
Okay, so out of the seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, the city of Weed is requesting, I'm not sure what the request originally was.
It's in the pink amount requested.
A pink, thirty thousand, and that was for event coverage, setup, security, and beautification. So translating to closing the roads, allowing for law enforcement to access the event for security, public works to, post-public works to clean up. Anything I missed? Set up the stage.
And break it down.
Mr. Hall allocated sixteen thousand, Councilman Mazzoni twenty-five thousand, I allocated zero, Daryl Parham, Councilman Parham allocated fifteen thousand, and Councilperson Tabalero twenty-five thousand, for an average of, drum roll, sixteen thousand, two hundred.
I think your zero messed up our average.
And it will remain zero. If anybody wants an explanation as to why, I can give that. One, I believe, out of the transient occupancy tax, eighty percent already goes to the city of Weed. This twenty percent is an allotment for the city council to give to organizations that can utilize those funds for a benefit for the community. As I have stated, to other members of the council and to the city manager, and I've expressed myself kind of everywhere, I believe those funds, the funds for the, yeah, I always do, right? The, I believe those funds belong in the, the request belongs in the general fund as a whole, and that's why I voted for zero. It should go into the general budget. But I am just one member.
That messed up our average.
That messed up your average, according to my vice mayor. So do anybody want to change their allotments? You're allowed to do so? Nope, okay? We have a no, we have a no. Councilman Parham?
I'm good with my math.
He's good? And Bob is good? Well, against...
You want to change yours?
Not at all. Somebody has to bring the average down. Pardon me? Okay, so I guess we'll stick at the sixteen thousand, two hundred. Next is the Family and Community Resource Center. They've asked for smaller amounts of twenty-five hundred for Kids' Day Festival, trunk-or-treat for three hundred, and summer fun camp at six hundred. I think these are in a priority order. I believe our member of the council, our executive director is not here tonight, he is the president of the Big Springs School District, so he is giving out diplomas right now. And I think his daughter is also graduating, so he's not going to come tonight. I will speak for him, if it's okay, would that be all right? Primarily, Kids' Day Festival brought in over a thousand parents and kids. We went out and gathered donations, including, I think last year was fifteen hundred dollars from the city of Weed. Tri-county's bank gave us money, I believe the Rotary gave us money, and they gave us, they served hot dogs and refreshments. We had participation from the churches, almost every county organization that was involved in some sort of activity. You could not spend any money there. It was a good event for everyone. They were very appreciative of the fact that you could spend zero. Trunk-or-treat is coming along, that's something that the city participates in, along with the Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary, and whoever else is donating funds. Summer fun camp has been put on the item in this list at six hundred dollars. Summer fun camp allows for, I think we have thirty children from the ages of five to ten, memory. We employ five people, five younger adults for the summer, I think it's eight weeks long. We charge a fee for that, for that event, but we also go out and get donations for food. They swim every day at our public pool. So those are the funds that have been requested. Looks like everything is almost in full. I'll ask Mr. Mazzoni to raise his, but I'm, and this Tabalero.
Something would be happy on that one, but, you know, anything with youth, I'm good with. I would raise it five hundred.
Okay.
Who are you taking away from?
That's the problem.
So...
Okay, will you think on that one for a minute? We can come back to that one. The next item up is for transforming, Siskiyou Arts Council for transforming vacant buildings. Is the art council here tonight? You want to come up and talk? Thank you.
How close are you getting?
Hello, do you want me to give you a short presentation for the benefit of the audience? Yes?
Pardon me?
Do you want me to give a short presentation for the benefit of the audience?
Yeah, if you can keep it to about five minutes or less.
How about thirty seconds?
We have people getting ready to go to graduation, so...
Sure, so in short, this would be a grant to transform some of the vacant, longtime vacant storefronts in downtown Weed into works of art, like murals, or even potentially like exhibitions or window displays.
And may I ask something?
Sure.
Would that also be for buildings that are occupied? Such, for an example, the train mural on the side of the vet's office needs to be refreshed. It would be nice to have a refreshed mural on the side of, actually, it's not a vacant building, she's trying to rent it, the old vet's hall.
Potentially, I would, my recommendation would be to prioritize what is vacant and fill those spaces first, and ask a question about whether you're trying to restore the mural or paint a new mural on top of it.
And if we did murals, murals are rather costly, am I not mistaken on that?
It depends on the mural, but they can be.
Okay. Are you applying for another grant?
Yes, so we did actually apply for matching funds to Union Pacific in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. I don't know if we'll receive it, but we did apply.
I just don't have a ton of faith. We have three, not in you, let me finish my sentence. We have three buildings that are owned by slum lords, and I'm not necessarily willing to put lipstick on that pig. There are some other pigs I'd put lipstick on, but not those. Do, would we have a choice in that?
Well, the, the, the spirit of the program is to work cooperatively with all business owners, and regardless of...
Business owners?
Building owners.
Oh, okay.
And business owners, and to make sure that, I mean, and just for the edification of the audience out there, none of this can be done without their permission, of course. It would have to work in concert with them to do that. Other cities have done and had success in working with, if I owned a business, if I owned a building in downtown that was vacant, and I had a big window that was, you know, with just showing a big empty vacant space, I'd rather have something showing in the window to make it look like it's alive instead of dead. And that's what the purpose, I think, she's trying to put across there. But yes, I believe some of the funds could be utilized for murals as well, so...
I mean, I gave her ten thousand, I didn't have a problem with it, I'm...
I also have a quick question, is how much can you do? Right now, the average is at sixty-four hundred or so. How much could you realistically do, even if it was ten thousand, without that grant?
Without the grant? Without the ten thousand?
Well, no, ten thousand dollars, if we gave you ten thousand dollars, how much could you accomplish if the grant that you were applying for besides this, could you achieve?
So we would reduce the amount of, we had budgeted, I think, in the, if we, in the scenario where it was ten thousand dollars from the city, I think we had budgeted a thousand dollars per artist to decorate a storefront. What you're going to get as a product out of an artist for that amount is going to be lower than if we allocate two thousand dollars per artist to decorate a storefront. So we can reduce the amount of labor that we're asking from for artists, based on what the city allocates, but that's your decision to make, is how high quality of a product do you want.
Well, based on those comments, does anybody want to move? I allocated full amount, hoping again that, you know, Bob and I went down and we decorated those streets years ago with papers and lights, and I had dreams of Norman Rockwell paintings on my head, but that didn't actually achieve it, but...
Sure. So what I can...
It was a, it was a fair dream.
What I can also offer is, we should know by, I would estimate mid-August, whether we got the Union Pacific grant. If we do get it, I'm willing to turn all but maybe a thousand dollars back to the city in TOT funds, if that's possible, and just do the project with the twenty-five thousand from Union Pacific. So, again, it's your decision.
Thank you.
So I have a question on that, and I feel I need to explain myself, since I was the big goose egg there.
Yeah, you were the one that messed up that average.
So, so full disclosure, I'm a business owner with a shop on Main Street, and I've invested tens of thousands of my own personal dollars into that shop. And if I ever have broken windows or a pig that needs lipstick, please come to my home and let me know your opinions, because that will never happen. My concern, I'm all for beautification and supporting artists. Patricia and I have talked about other projects and grants and things like that. My concern with this money is the major buildings that we have downtown, they're dilapidated by, they're owned by quote-unquote slum lords, they're aren't members of this community. We've had people in this community with, willing to invest their own money into buying those buildings, myself being one of them, and they would not sell them for a reasonable price to any of the potential investors, so they could be rehabilitated. And so my question is, is if the city spent this money, would, have you reached out to these owners, these dilapidated buildings, and will they give you their consent to improve their private property?
Sure.
And so I'm just curious if you've had that contact with those owners, and if, what their response was.
Valid question. So when I walked up and down Main Street, I counted eleven buildings, not including Blackbeute Saloon, that were potential candidates for having works placed in the windows. While I was walking up Main Street, I happened to bump into someone who asked why I was taking pictures of a building, I explained, and then that person explained who they were. They were construction, doing construction for one of the owners, and I said, you know, this is the project that we want to do, do you think that the person that owns this building would be interested? And they said, absolutely. So I can't tell you that I've reached out to every single owner, but I have done some grassroots work to figure out whether or not we could get community support for this, including the business owners.
And I guess my other question is for Tim, our city manager. If we allocate funds, and the, not enough people are willing to support the arts council with this endeavor, and that money comes back to the city, where does that money go, now that we, once we allocate it tonight? Where, if that money comes back to us, for whatever reason, do we have another meeting to reallocate those funds?
Sure, you know, we can do that, we can come back. Sure, you know, we can do that. We can come back and reallocate the, the remainder of it for one of the other requestees. Absolutely.
So are you asking, so for clarification, are you asking that we do a little bit of footwork first or?
Yeah, I just, I would like to know which buildings, not necessarily exactly what the murals are going to be, but what the vision of the artists are. I've sat through a lot of meetings on the planning commission and as a spectator for the council with our constituents having various differences of opinions on the types of businesses and the types of artwork in town. And so what, what I have a taste for artistically, other people may disagree with and vice versa. And so, so there's just a lot of questions that I have, you know, regarding what kind of artwork is it going to be, what buildings are going to participate, if those building owners will participate, what our contingency plans are if the money's spent and, and are provided and not being able to be spent for various reasons. There's just a lot of questions left for me, what ifs. It's not very solid, whereas, you know, like with the, the events for like the kids' days and things like that, and the measure of a, a community is how they treat their children and their elders. We talked about Measure O and what we are doing for our senior programs and with our public services. Obviously, both as a, a member of the chamber and as a Rotarian, I support, I personally supported my own money and time to of these three causes, causes for the, the children's services. Those are no brainers to me because I've, I've been there, I've seen that. It's very directly focused. We're going to give you money, it's going to go toward this thing. And there's a history and there's a, there's a roadmap on where that money is going to go. And, you know, while I, I really do believe in paying artists and supporting artwork and obviously I have a stake in revolais in downtown, that's why I put my money where my mouth is on that. I just want a little more, you know, clarification, a little more roadmap, a little more surety, I guess.
So if we allocate, this is what I'm interpreting. Correct me. So I'm, I'm hearing you want a theme and a, potentially a theme of what's going in. So what kinds of artwork and you want to know a survey of who's willing to participate?
Well, exactly, yeah. And, and if there are other business owners who would participate out of their own pockets to meet that theme. You know, you know, like on the planning commission, we were very stringent with businesses and they came into town about, these are ordinances for how your building must look, you know, to fit with the mountain theme. This is the colors you have to have. We're a tree city, you can't go cut down all your trees and clear cut it and put in a bunch of concrete. And so if we're going to be that stringent to the business owners and the property owners who spend their money correctly and who care about this community, you know, we want to make sure that we do that when we're spending city funds on those business and property owners who necessarily do not.
And I, I understand, and, but, but I think the, you know, one of the tasks of us given when I was first hired here is to do something with Main Street. And I, we, we have tried and tried and tried and this is just one thing and to, to do that. And I, I, I think, I don't think you'll probably get a ton of resistance from the ones that are, you know, active business owners or active landlords down there either. But it's just something to, like I said, add some, you know, as part of this TOT, it was for beautification and that's what it was. And that's what I think we were trying to assist or accomplish here with storefronts and potential murals as well, so.
So if we did allocate, could you provide us kind of a survey of how many people would participate and then?
I, I told Patricia we can get with John Pemberton because he has the contacts for every single building and, and give her that contact information. Sure. And then, as she stated earlier, if she gets the grant, then she'll just return the, whatever you decide tonight and back to the Oh, does anybody need any coffee?
Yeah, a couple cups.
So that, that, that being said.
So with all of that, is there more discussion?
Real quick comment. I, I, we talked about it earlier somewhat and I've been on this council for a long time and we've yet to do anything down, other than many of us, there, there was volunteers that went down and did that, that downtown project with lights and pavers and the whole works and our dream, we, we did that because we really built, felt if we built it, they'd come. And we, we did what we could, new curbs, gutters, streetlights, the, the whole, whole thing. But I, I think like regardless, Councilperson Tabalero was talking about, you know, where do we start? We start with ugly. You know, I mean, we, we have, we have a, a variety of ugly to, that we could fix. And I, I really think it's important that we start or at least try something to say, well, we tried. You know, it, it, just the lipstick on the pig, you know, it, it's, I'd rather, I'd rather see a good looking pig than, 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 well, I'm getting off. But I, I think we, I think we, we have to do something. And I think what, what Councilman Parham is saying, he's, he, he's right there too. We, we do need some, something to have some faith in that this is going, actually going to happen because we've talked about beautification for fifteen years I've been on the council.
And in full disclosure, I, I had approached Patricia because I feel strongly about, you know, beautifying our, 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 our Main Street as well. And I was looking for a group that deals with artists. Imagine that. And this isn't just some pie in the sky. This has been utilized all over the country. These programs have been utilized all over the country. This isn't something brand new just thought of as far as the storefronts go. No, murals are all over the place. But storefronts have been, you know, artists have, have, have gone and decorated storefronts for a number of cities. And it's amazing what it does when you drive down a, 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 a street and actually see art in a window as opposed to nothing. So that, that, that's just one.
So with everything that we've said here, does anybody want to, we have an average right now of sixty-four hundred dollars. Does anybody want to move their numbers anywhere and if they move them, knowing that you got to take them some, from somewhere else? Can't move your number? Okay. Okay, all right. So.
It's not a zero.
It's not a zero, okay. So what we have is an average of sixty-four hundred dollars. Okay. We're going to move on to Siskiyou Food Assistant. Run for food.
Are we giving her the sixty-four?
Thank you.
Lot in the average on that one? So that's a yes?
I think we've allowed, we beat it up. Does anybody want, I asked if anybody wanted to.
I think we'll do this with one motion at the end.
Yeah.
So you go through.
I'm sorry.
And Mark wanted, didn't want to change his vote after all, so you can probably do the twenty-one forty, the three hundred and the five twenty. Is that, is that right? Did I get that right?
But, but I kind of understood it that the chamber also though had, these two were kind of connected is how I interpreted it.
Who is?
Well, the Siskiyou Arts and it's, it's brand new, right? This is the first time this has been presented up here?
Yes.
Yes. And I'm thinking that should also fall with the, a chamber. That should be part of what they do. Well, I'm just saying, that's what it should be.
Well, they, they have a proposal, they have some of that same language in their proposal.
Right, okay. Well, I'll get to that.
Okay. Let's move on to Siskiyou Food Assistance. Run for food. The original request was twenty-six hundred. We have variations from two thousand. You guys can read, twenty-six, twenty-five, seven eighty-six and twelve sixty-five. I don't know if Denise is here tonight?
She's not.
She not? In the past, I think that event is held on Thanksgiving. I thi, I don't know, don't know how many participated. I think it was canceled last year because of COVID or
No, they had it last year.
They had it last year? Okay. Year before was canceled.
Yeah, and it's, well, the year before I think was canceled because of snow and then the other two might have been.
So it's, it's kind of an iffy thing.
She said they, she said they make about ten thousand off of that and of course would love for it to be more.
So does anybody have any questions about that? I think Sue or I could answer some, not a whole lot. We got the average is eighteen thirty. No changes? Okay. Going once, going twice. Weed Historic Lumber Town Museum Guide wages. Mount requested with eighteen thousand five hundred. What we have is allocations of seventy-five, twelve, three, eleven, one, fifteen and ten for an average of eleven thousand two hundred. It's just what I almost allocated. I kind of agree with that.
Do we have anybody here from the museum that can give, answer questions or give?
Yeah. Jim Taylor back there is a docent at the museum. You want to come forward? Sorry, Jim. Those first five steps are hard, aren't they?
My name is Jim Taylor, Eight Ten Hillside Drive, and I do manage the Weed Museum. But I wish our secretary or our treasurer here tonight to answer the questions. I'm not real sure. I have not seen her request, so I honestly can't answer the questions.
The request is in there pretty good anyway, so did you have questions?
I just, I haven't been to museum in over a decade myself. I do notice that they're open and functioning and I know people come here to visit there. And so I just wanted to hear more about the program, what maybe has changed since I've been there. You know, kind of what your, your demographics for traffic are, like how many people you serve per year.
Before COVID, we were doing very well. We were only open four months out of the year. And then when COVID hit, it went, I'd say probably a quarter of the people we get down there now. But it's coming back. Last year was better. This year's even better, better yet. The first two weeks, we're probably twice what we were this time last year. During the year, we will probably see at least forty, maybe forty-five states that'll be represented, will come through for somehow. And the year before COVID, I believe we had like thirty-five foreign countries that came through. So they're finding us on Google or AAA or many are on our website also. So at least we are, the visitors are improving. Yesterday I had twenty-some odd yesterday down there. Welcome you to come down anytime we're open, every day but Tuesdays.
You're on my list. It's a, it's a long list, but you're on my list.
Do you know how many people annually you see? Roughly ballpark, pre or post COVID?
I would say probably around twenty-five hundred to three thousand that comes through.
Yeah, because they're only open like three months, four months.
Maybe you can put it on your website or something too.
We've got a, a new member helping me down there, Paul Shelton. He's pretty techy, so he's working on our website.
That would be, that would be helpful, Jim.
So it says on there, may I say something?
Well, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. It says on there that they're, they want this for salaries.
Wages.
Wages, yes, for the two people that are down there. One year they asked for tires for the old fire truck and one, you know, they've asked for different things. And this year, that's what it's, wages, payroll, taxes and workers' comp.
Just for information, we put new carpet in last year, it was sixteen thousand dollars, but we got a grant for part of that. We put new windows in it this year, so we're fortunate enough to get a grant for that. That was about twenty-seven hundred, twenty-four hundred dollars, so.
I, I am, I am thankful that you go out and get some grants for your, for the carpeting.
Lucky to do that, so.
It's very good. And plus I think you could also participate in, what is it, Giving Tuesday, North State Giving Tuesday?
Not sure on the amount, but we had a, a fair showing this year in Giving Tuesday, so we've only been on board with that, I think, for two years.
And the museum dinner does well and it's quite tasty.
It does, it does. We were coming up off, like again, off of COVID, so it was, it was kind of hard there for several years. But we worked pretty well with Sons of Italy and dinners and it's, well, we filled the hall pretty much down.
Any other questions from council?
Just a quick comment. Jim, you also, the, the lumberjack made the, the front of the budget this year too. I just want to let you know, so.
Thank you. We appreciate whatever, whatever we can get. Everything helps. We're fortunate, we have
I appreciate the help, the helping yourselves part that you guys did, honestly. So thank you.
We operate mostly on donations and memberships and like any other organization, memberships is going down. We don't have the younger people that are getting interested.
We've got five new, five new members here. Or at least four, I'm already. Three?
Wish I could answer more questions for you, but.
You're good.
I appreciate your time and answering the questions that you did.
Look forward to it. I'll see you.
After hearing that, are everybody okay with the allotments or does it want to go up or down? Everybody good? Okay, we'll leave it at the average, eleven-two. Weed Chamber of Commerce. I see Richard is out in the audience. The original request is fifty-five, eight seventy-six. Come on down, as they say.
Good evening again. One of the reasons why we put that fifty-five thousand up there, and I know that we only have a limited amount of money and there's so many different entities up there that really need the funding, is because we need to hire someone else. And I was just about the end of my rope. After four years, it's like I've been doing this single-handedly and it's been really, really tough. So I thought I'd still need to stay in here and I'm going to do it for another year just to make sure that we get the events moving forward. And I was going to quit in July and I decided after talking with my wife and talking with my, my board that we, I need to stay on. So I'm going to stick it out for another year and make sure that this thing gets successful. And I know that you were talking, Mark was talking about the beautification and yes, we put aside about five thousand dollars a year for that. And now that we have the planters that have already been set up onto the light poles, we had a new person with AARP start with us. They're going to start on Monday. So we'll be able to get those things watered about every two days, so they won't die on us. And we've, we're also going to be submitting a form to the city for the, I think it's twenty thousand dollars for the cover in the park into Heritage Plaza. I think we have somebody that's going to come up with the money to do the foundation, so that should be pretty easily. You know, what happened with the smoke and the fire coming in last year and with COVID, everything kind of dropped out and we couldn't actually get the material for the cover. So now they have it. So I talked to Donna Winger and I'm working with her. So we're going to get that cover. We're going to get it ordered. We're going to get the frame ordered. And I do believe I have a person that's going to be stepping up to the plate to do the foundation. So I want to get it in by August, hopefully, July or August. And then we'd have a cover for the park and I think a lot more people would use it if they had shade there. And it'd be a lot more fun to have a band there. You don't have to, you know, you have covering for individuals during the summertime. I don't know. I, I think there's a lot of potential here. And I do like the idea about having the artwork on the buildings and I know who you're talking about, about cleaning it up. But I think it really does need to be cleaned up a little bit. And we talked to someone also about doing vinyl in the windows to make that change, so it makes it look like these buildings are, are being occupied. So I saw that in a, in a small community down in Oregon or up in Oregon. And I have to tell you, when I went by the building, it looked like there was actually somebody inside and they were eating dinner and I thought, that's a nice restaurant. No, it was vacant and it just had a big mural in where the window was and it looked like there were people inside. So those kind of things do attract people and I think this town has so much potential. It really does. And I would just like to see that bloom. I would like to see, we've already got the flowers going now and there's a lot, they're getting color. And the sidewalks are great, the lamps are great. I mean, you have such great focal points in this community and I think that we can enhance that. And so the one reason why I'm asking for so much money is I'd like to get an assistant. I really need one, but I understand you only have so much money to work with and I appreciate anything you can do for us. I think it was forty-six. Forty-six thousand. Oh, we, I think it's twenty thousand.
Fifteen thousand. It's up there. Fifteen thousand was allocated for the canopy.
No, we're going to, we're ordering it. We're in the process of doing it now.
That's already, that's already in the budget.
Yeah. About five thousand.
All right. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to take my leave of absence for graduation, so sorry about that.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. May I get a motion to accept Daryl's absence?
I make, I move to accept Daryl's absence to see his son graduate from high school. Yay!
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye, aye.
Okay. Does anybody want to change the numbers for thirty-two? Misoni, twenty-one. David, forty-six. My, Daryl, thirty-five. Miss Tabalero, this Tabalero.
Average.
I'm going. I'm happy. Fair is fair.
Have a cemetery dinner fundraiser on Halloween.
Creative. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I want to make a comment on that. Historically, the, you know, many of us have been here long enough to remember what the cemetery looked like, say, thirty years ago. I mean, it was just a patch, you know, no grass. I mean, it was wild. And the bad, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from, Ken, but I, historically, the cemetery's been very dependent on the funding that it gets from the city. And there has been some attempts. We made an attempt to, and I was really discouraged in the last, when we, what was the measure we, we had up? It was helping? No, it wasn't measure O. It was the one that failed last, last year.
It didn't fail. It never got to the voters.
Right, never got to the voters. But the point, my point, the point is, is that, that the cemetery, they've come a long ways. They do a heck of a thing, a job, but reorganizing it, we know we have to do that. We know, we know, you know, something has to be done. You're right there. But so far, I mean, we really have some people that have stepped up their plate over the years that have kept this thing going because they wanted to keep it going, not for a paycheck. You know, there's, so I, I want to make sure that we understand that, that I agree there's something that needs to happen. But historically, the cemetery has been very dependent on the, on the city, so.
Can I say one thing about that? And I agree with Bob. So I'm just upset because somebody should have been here representing them. I still support it, and, and they have done a great job. Less than them having a wall, and they're trying to generate funds, well aware of that, and I'm good with that. But when you have something like this, somebody needs to be here to represent it, period. So, but, but I do back them.
Who's to green?
Yes, Stacy Green, eleven-seven-three Crestmore, soon to be rebuilt. I wanted to mention that the title should be the Willamette Cemetery Association because it's the two cemeteries built together that are, that are managed by the Willamette Cemetery. So that might be a change you can do as far as grammatically on the report. But I wanted to mention that, as you know, a few years back, I, I worked with some people that put money together that helped beautify it, and it was done really well. And Claudius Hildreth was one of the leaders of that. And because of the fire, he's not in the area anymore. And I went over there this Memorial Day to see what was done because I, I was in the hospital. I couldn't get out before that. But when I came over there, I saw that it had, it had been done. And I was very surprised and very happy. And a lot of people who came up from the other areas were happy to see that. They all told me, we went there, it was all done. So the beautification is working for that, and I personally saw it myself. And I know it's Mr. Dutt and the other gentleman. I saw, when I was at the hospital, he was in the hospital with his wife. So, and he mentioned to me years ago, Stacy, I can't do this anymore. I'm getting older. We need some more people to be involved. And we keep saying that, like you say, it's, it's beating the door to a dead horse. But the beautification is still happening there. I wanted just to mention that, and mention the people that were involved with it, that put money out of their own pocket to beautify that and buy all new flags, all new poles, and, and used it. And that was done. So I just wanted to mention that when we were talking about the content of the program. I'm not on the, on the committee, but we helped the Lincoln Heights site to do, to, to move ahead. Roads are really good, and it's real nice down there. Still, still, I, I still don't know what Mr. Claus is going to do. I hope he comes back. I don't know yet. But people did take up the role and beautify it. I was happy to see that. I wanted to mention that because I was there. That's all.
Thank you, Stacy. Then I won't, I, based on Stacy's comments, I'm just going to leave this alone. Is everybody okay with the average? And, all right. So be it the average. How far? So we just kind of went with the average. Boy, we beat a dead horse around here, I have to say.
It doesn't need to be a motion to accept.
We can beat a dead one like nobody's business.
To accept the TOT.
Allocations.
Allocations.
I'll second that.
Mr. Mayor, just to confirm, that was all the public comment that we had?
Oh, any other public comment that wants, anybody wants to bring forth? Yes, Stacy?
Oh, Sandy?
In just a minute, I have a talk over the screen.
Okay. Actually, I have a whole spreadsheet. We didn't change anything, so I'll let you have it afterwards. So we're okay.
It says eleven thousand two hundred dollars and forty cents. Yes.
I can give you this afterwards, Jim. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, we have a vote on the floor, a motion by Mark, a second by Sue. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Now if I can find my agenda back again. Okay. Stafford, we already did that part. Back to item A, finance, a motion to consider agreement between the City of Weed and the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, DBA, Family and Community Resource Center of Weed, set funding amount for twenty-three slash twenty-four and slash twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal years. I think I'll add as, as recommended by the Measure O Committee.
And there was some request for changes to the language to both, was it to both of them or just to one of the?
I believe it was to both.
To both agreements. So we can do one of two things. I mean, if you, if it's, it's up to the council, you can just accept the contracts as they were presented by the entities. But if you would like them to go back and to review what the Measure O Committee had recommended, some of the changes, we can do it subject to city attorney review. Or we can just bring them back next month. It's up to you guys. However you want it. There's three choices.
I've already talked with the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, and they're fine. As state, as given by the Measure O Committee.
Okay.
Has David reviewed them? Have you reviewed what they?
I have not. I just got them when I got the packets.
I would like to wait till next month to vote on that, for him to review both of them.
There are some suggested changes that I would make, I think.
Okay.
I think the Measure O's comments with respect to the.
No, I'm, I'm good with it.
So you're, you're okay with the dollar amounts? You just wanted to, to look at the language, is what we need to know?
For those two.
For those two contracts?
Yes.
Okay, that's what we're asking.
Yes.
Because we'll take a look at it, and then, for example, the parks can send it to county council and for review and?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So item B, finance again by motion, consider agreement between?
So, so basically, you're, you're tabling that one, and we're bringing it back next?
Tabling it for review by council?
And we're bringing it back next month with the suggested?
With suggest, with any recommended amendments, okay.
So both of them?
We're going to table both of them.
For A and B items.
But the, but the funding amounts.
Are the Measure O recommendations.
Are approved.
Yeah.
Do we need to take a vote on the approval of the funding amounts?
No, because we'll bring it back.
We'll bring it back with those amounts.
So that's okay. So we don't have to vote on these two? We can?
I don't think so.
Just table them both of them.
The other option, like the city manager said, was to approve them subject to city attorney review and approval. So that would be the only other option.
He's only going to review the, and he's going to get back with the Resource Center Legal Council and the, and the parks' legal council.
And I would just suggest some changes to the language and stuff. So it's.
Well, I will tell you, we're not, we're not involving a lawyer most likely in our side, so we're fine with whoever you have.
But are we going to approve it and with the, the, subject to changes, right?
Yes.
That's, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Subject to change.
Subject to change.
Yeah.
Both A and B?
A and B, yes. Any, can I get a second?
And that's for A and B, okay.
Any public comment out there?
Question, Stacy Green. The, the title, is this the nine-six-four-nine-four collaborative?
No. No.
Okay.
This is the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative.
Okay.
And the Family and Community Resource, DBA, Family and Community Resource Center of Weed.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I had a first by council member Misoni, and who seconded that motion?
I did.
Miss Tabalero. Okay, on to item C. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I say, seeing no objections, we pass that motion? No, anyway, just kidding. Item D, finance by motion, consider adoption of resolution number zero-nine, twenty-twenty-three, approving the twenty-three, twenty-four, and the twenty-four, twenty-five municipal budget. Has everybody reviewed that at length?
And unfortunately, our finance director couldn't be here tonight, so.
Do we have to approve that tonight, or do we?
I, I would recommend yes, because that's, that, without any, because if we, we would have to do a continued resolution, and we don't have that here tonight. So here's what I would recommend. You pass the budget tonight, and then we're going to bring back, more than likely, over the next couple of months, some amendments to the budget based on potential?
Based on a lot of things?
Based on a lot of things, including allocations to the city, so, to the revenue side.
Good.
Okay.
So does anybody want to make a motion then? Oh, public comment on the budget? Okay, no public comment.
I moved adoption of resolution of the city council, the city of Weed adopting municipal budget for fiscal years twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
It's a resolution.
Zero-nine-two-three? Zero-nine-two-zero-two-three?
I second.
Been first, been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carrying. TOT has been finished. We've lost most of the audience. Any staff reports? Start it off with Steve.
I have a couple of things. I just wanted to mention that and recognize that Crystal Geyser Water donated ten thousand dollars to us to purchase the new radios. It gives us four of them, but.
Expensive, aren't they?
Yeah. They're twenty-five hundred bucks a piece. But that's, that's great that they did that.
That was very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Attended many school functions, have you seen? I don't know if you see our Facebook. Posted a few things on Facebook. We've done a lot of training with new employees. We're, we have one new sleeper application for a new sleeper and a new volunteer. We're also testing hydrants and getting ready to start sending weed abandonment letters. So if you need your weeds done, you better get them done, or you're going to get a letter.
I'm going to have to get my wife on that lawn, I tell you.
Yeah. That's all I got. Thanks.
Sorry, hon. No. I'm going to take a picture next time of Vermont, and I'm going to prove it to you. Anyway. Thanks. Okay.
Just to let you know that we are, should start seeing some action going on over on Roseburg Parkway and around the mill, and we should start some construction pipeline as early as next week. Yes, we've done our USAs, so we're moving forward.
Can I do a walk? My circle?
You might have to run.
And jump.
Yeah. Yes, it'll, it'll still be open to pedestrian traffic.
Chief Mayor Berry?
I just want to extend a big thank you to Dr. Amy, and I don't say Dr. Amy out of disrespect. That's what she prefers to go by, for her help and assistance with the rabies and parvovaccine clinic outside that we held. I don't have the numbers. I believe there was probably close to fifty people that came and got their dogs. But the, the cost of animal ownership has gone up significantly in the last couple of years, and that does help the community quite a bit on helping getting their dogs registered and keeping them compliant with state laws. So thank you again. and keeping them compliant with state laws. So, thank you again.
How, how often can you do those?
The vaccine clinic?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, she donates almost, pretty much her time to come here and do that, and, and staff organizes it. We do one, one, once a year.
Okay, cool.
What clinic does she work?
What's that?
What clinic does she work with?
I believe she's, I believe she's independent currently, yes. Yeah, she's, she primarily specializes in large animals. She's one of the few large animal veterinarians that are still around. Um, but she does come here and assist us with that. She has for several years now, and I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Justin. Sandy, you're up.
No comment.
Come on, a speech, speech. Uh, Tim, oh, actually, David, do you have anything?
I just wanted to let the council know that I did attend the Cal City City Attorney's Conference since we last spoke. Um, were there pictures?
See, little do you know.
I did do the fun run for the first time.
You did?
Um, so that was strenuous.
Strenuous. You didn't say fun, but strenuous.
Yeah, it was good. So anyway, um, I look forward to speaking to the city manager about some of the things you learned about.
Okay.
And there was no cost to the city for my team.
Kudos to that. Tim?
I'd just like to reiterate what was said earlier, especially in regards to the Measure O Committee, for all their work that they put into this, put a lot of hours, and, uh, not just the hours here at City Hall, but behind the scenes as well, reviewing, uh, several things. Melissa did a, a fantastic job of, uh, of chairing that organization, and I think it's, uh, something that, uh, again, they put a lot of, uh, blood, sweat, and tears into. We learned a few things to, to do and not to do, as far as mostly just decorum and, and how things were handled. But it was our first, literally our first rodeo in trying to, to put this thing together. Um, our goal next time is to have it maybe a couple of months in advance next time, but this all happened rather quickly. Um, I'd also, in regards to the budget, would like to say a big, big thank you to my staff. Um, they put in a lot of hours into working with myself and Anna, and meeting with us, and, uh, scrubbing these budgets down, and, uh, that they, they are to be committed because these things don't happen overnight. They take a lot of work and a lot of effort to put these into. Uh, so, like I say, like, just a big thank you to them, uh, behind the scenes of getting this done. And just real quickly, on the, uh, Lincoln Heights, uh, as, uh, our Public Works Director had stated, we're going to start doing some work over there. We're also going to be meeting with OES next, is it Monday? Uh, going to have a, a meeting with them. They're going to go over our final project list, a walkthrough on that, and we're hoping to have something done quickly. I can tell you also, we are, uh, moving very well with the Underground Utility District as well. Um, but we're getting, everything is starting to gel together with that, with the trenching, uh, and, and so forth, so, um, and I, again, just reiterate to the folks that are out there that are wanting to rebuild their homes, we've already got one that's, you know, under construction. Uh, if you drive out there today, you, they were out there working on it today, Mr. Thomas's lot, and, uh, if, if you have your plans, bring them in for review. We will work, uh, and bend over backwards to make sure that you can get started with your construction without any sort of disruption, as we've done for him, and we'll do for you as well with, with everything possible. So I think, uh, the Collaborative had a real good meeting a couple of days ago with a home builder out of, uh, Anderson and Reading, and I think they're going to have another meeting, I believe, with another builder here pretty soon as well, and, uh, possibly look at some, some other models, uh, that are being drawn up. Uh, so we're excited to start seeing that kind of trickle in, and we know with that, we're going to start rebuilding Lincoln Heights, and it's going to look, uh, it's going to look great when it's all done. Thank you.
Tim, a question. Uh, uh, on the, uh, free dump day, when, when is that scale? Are we having a dump day this year?
Free dump day has not occurred in several years. That money came out of TOT. Uh, we did away with that and started giving it to other people.
Okay, well, you didn't ask for it.
Well, it's, yeah, it, it's been divvied up and, and we can, that's going to be probably around four thousand dollars of that TOT fund to do that one day. So.
Does, does county have something? I thought I heard somebody say?
Caltrans has done a couple of free dump days, um, recently, that, um, one in Mount Shasta and also one in Moirica. Uh, but that's, that, you've got to take it to the transfer stations. Where our dump day, you took it to the city yard. So.
Oh.
They're out there.
So if we, excuse me, if, if we were going to have another dump day, then we, we probably should be trying to go through the county, or would the county, uh?
If you want to have the dump day in town, that was put on, that was all organized by my staff.
Right.
If you want to have a dump day that's free with the county, that's something they provide once or twice a year, but, uh, you have to go to the county. And just so everybody knows, we were recently told from the county that the transfer station is going to be under a new contract with a new, uh, company, so, uh, we're not sure what's going to happen there either.
Didn't the county say they were going to keep it open?
Oh, it's going to stay open.
But, I mean, you, new companies come with new contracts and?
New policies.
Possibly new, um, you know, fee structures, so.
Yeah. And, and, and to answer your question, Councilmember Hall, we can talk to our current carrier, uh, the contractor, Siskiugh Disposal, about possibly doing something in, in, in regards to this. Maybe, I don't know, we'd have to work with Craig and, and some other folks in doing that, but we can, we can approach them about doing something.
I'll also add that the staffing of that was all done volunteer. So, everybody up there was getting, spending their Saturday doing that for the community. It was not, so the, the cost is all with collection and, and disposal.
But that's what I'm saying with the new carrier, they may, they may be willing to work with us on something to, to haul it off. We've got to have somebody hauling it off.
Did, did we ever work with the county as far as the, the fees for dumping? I mean, did we correlate with?
No, it was in the, I'm sorry, it was in the state.
So, yes, we worked with our sanitation provider to come up with a cost. They provided the bins, they hauled them to the transfer station.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the staffing, actual, the manpower to work that whole event was all volunteer from the police department.
Okay.
Anybody else that wanted to go up on here?
Well, you, you have to be careful there. There, there's, I mean, we, we, you do, we did have some injuries. I mean, you have people bringing in, um, yeah, heavy items that can't get them out of their vehicles and sharp items. I mean, there's some, there's some liability there that has to be weighed as well, so.
So we haven't had that for how many days? I mean, how many years? Two years?
Oh, no, we haven't had it since, uh, let's say, twenty-nineteen?
Yeah.
The spring of twenty-nineteen.
That was, that was a great program. I worked at it. It, it trained a lot of, a lot of homes and yards up here, and while it went away, I wasn't sure, I was tired. That's something I think that we should work on. That's worth, worth, I was thinking if you could work with the, um, the gardeners company and the group way down there at the, the dump, the transfer. It was huge, because they did cut lights on it and things like that, and it was just for the city.
Well, and I, I will say that won't be something that we can even start to discuss until the new company takes over. Uh, just having gone recently myself, there are some services that aren't currently being provided down there, probably preemptively as they're waiting for the new contract to come in, so, or new company, excuse me.
They had the big giant ones, big giant bins. Yep, they got friends. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, do we?
I got another.
We have to close the game one more.
Are you freaking out because it's not on the agenda? All this?
This is all staff reports.
Okay, good. Um, did you jump, did you put dumpsters in neighborhoods, or everything had to be brought to the city yard?
It had to be brought to the city yard. Uh, we would prefer it that way so we can monitor what's being thrown away, and you're not getting, uh, chemicals or tires.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I get it, I get that part. Thanks.
Any more questions from the council?
We have a closed session too.
On staff reports? Any more on your staff report?
Nope, other than we're ready for closed session.
Okay. I get a motion for closed session.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we move to clo, closed session.
One and two, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mazzoni seconded.
Good, but, oh, I don't, yeah, I don't know, is that where we're heading to?
Yeah. I don't know what, well, I guess we can.